Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 24th, 2025. Scheduled board meeting for the Mill Creek Township School District Board of Directors. Tonight, we are meeting at the Mill Creek Education Center. While the public is encouraged to attend in person, we will continue to stream the meetings live on YouTube. And all the meetings will be recorded for the purpose of future viewing. You can also view this evening's agenda as well as several additional informational items on our website. www.mtsd.org. Agendas are posted online 48 hours prior to the advertised meeting as well as being physically posted 48 to 72 hours. Prior to this advertised meeting in the display case posted on the exterior of the Mill Creek Education Center. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. Also like to remind all speakers, court team members, board members. To speak clearly and distinctly into their microphones, so you can be heard by all of our attendees this evening. Whether they are here in person or viewing us on YouTube. Thank you. Can I roll call Ms. O'Connor?
Mr. Brink?
Here.
Mr. Dean?
Here.
Ms. Philbeck?
Here.
Mr. Kobelka?
Here.
Mr. Lindner?
Present.
Ms. Newsom?
Here.
Ms. Pesquale?
Here.
Mr. Winchell?
Here.
Ms. Winchell?
Here.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Present.
Attorney Senate?
Here.
One point zero two executive session. Executive session is held on March 24th, 2025 for the purpose of personal. One point zero three approval of the agenda. Can I have approval of this evening's agenda?
Motion?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please join me in standing, Pledge your Legion. Thank you. Item one point zero five, the Mill Creek Education Foundation Partnership. I believe Chris Huber is online. Chris, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share information about the Mill Creek Education Foundation. Thank you to everyone that supported MEF on Give Education Day. This 24-hour virtual fundraising event was hosted by Alumni Nations. In addition to the gifts received, MEF won a $500 gift from a breakfast prize drawing provided by the corporate sponsors of the event. The MEF scholarship applications has closed. Thank you to all the McDowell seniors that applied. Recipients will be notified before graduation. The last opportunity of the school year for teachers and staff to apply for MEF grants is April 1st. The grant application is on the MEF website on the What We Support Ted. Beginning April 1st, we will have an open call on Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn for nominations for MEF Bright Spots. These are MTSD employees that are welcoming, kind, inclusive, positive, and supportive. Colleagues, students, and parents are welcome to nominate. The MEF Bright Spots started in 2020 during the pandemic as a morale booster and continues today to recognize individuals that are a positive example for Mill Creek students. All MTSD students are eligible to apply for financial support to participate in a camp, a club, sport, become a member of the YMCA, scouting, try a new activity, et cetera. Through the Ellers piece of the puzzle fund application. The link to the application is on our website in the Funds tab and are accepted all year. Some upcoming events that benefit MEF funds. This Saturday, March 29th at noon, the Red Fox Inn is holding a charity bowling tournament at Green Garden Lanes to benefit the MEF Michael Palermo Scholarship Fund. There are a few spots available. The Popluck popcorn grams will be sold during the month of April to support the MEF Grants Fund. Popcorn will be delivered to any MTSD building during the first week of May in conjunction with National Teacher and Staff Appreciation Day. This year's flavors, some more Trojans, cheddar cheers for MTSD teachers and staff, celebrate Mill Creek, which is cake batter. And MTSD is butter because of you, which is generic Jenny. The MAF golf tournament will be held Thursday, June 26th at Whispering Woods Golf Club. This will be a tee time event beginning at 7:30 a.m. and teeing off in 10-minute increments. Sponsorships and foursome registrations are available online and past sponsors and golfers will receive this information via mail this week. Several McDowell High School alumni groups are planning their upcoming reunions. The class of 83 is having a 60th birthday bash for the entire class of July, on July 12th. Class of 1985 is having theirs 40th reunion on August 2nd. Class of 95 has a weekend full of events, July 25th through the 27th. And the class of 2000 has their 25th reunion on July 25th. The class of 1975 and 2005 are also finalizing plans for summer reunions. And you can find reunion information, RSVP links on the alumni page of the MAF website. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you for the partnership. Item two, school board minutes. Two point zero one, school board minutes, meeting minutes of February the 24th, 2025. And two point zero two, committee of the whole meeting minutes of March the 10th, 2025. Can I motion to accept two point zero one and two point zero two?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against aye, motion passes. Item three, visitors. We provide the opportunity for the Mill Creek Township Presidents and taxpayers to address the board for up to three minutes. To make comments concerning any item that is in front of the board for action this evening. Or for any upcoming board meeting. Details can be found on the MTSD website with each meeting announcement. Same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. If you'd like to address the board this evening, please complete the form provided at the entrance to this room at this time. Including your name, address, and topic. And then submit the form to the board secretary. Once called upon, speakers will then be asked to state their name and topic before speaking. As guests of the board, you are encouraged to speak about the matters related to the program, services, and operations of the Mill Creek Township School District. Please remember, we are prohibited from discussing specific employees, job performance, or pending litigation. As a reminder to the board and to the public, the board will not engage in a discussion with public speakers during the monthly board meetings. It is our obligation to discuss with the entire board only the matters posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency. Any other matters requiring attention will receive their appropriate administrative follow-up at a time following the meeting. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or individual character attacks. As those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this type of public forum exists. Thank you for cooperation. We appreciate your input and your feedback. First speaker this evening is Amanda Austin. Amanda, you have three minutes once you hit the code. You just restate your name and your topic, please.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Austin. I would like to talk about the school meals. I'm the mother of a kindergarten student at Asbury and the parent representative of the Wellness Committee. I commend you for running an excellent school district. I am truly amazed at the progress my daughter has made both intellectually and socially. But the fact remains that the school meals- but the fact remains that the school meals are still incredibly unhealthy. So this week's breakfast options include sprinkle-filled pancakes, cinnamon rolls, Trix French toast, and Trix cereal bars, Rice Krispie treats, Frosted Pop Tarts, chocolate chip muffins, and donuts. These foods have no nutritional value and they contain an incredible amount of sugar that quickly spikes and then plummets blood sugar levels. This leads to energy crashes and hunger signals by mid-morning, which destroys students' ability to focus. This week's lunches are no better, with options including many types of breaded and fried chicken, fried pizza bites, French toast sticks, pizza, corn dogs, hot dogs, and nachos. So this is a menu designed to foster chronic disease. Since I last addressed the board in May, the teen prediabetes rate has increased from 33% to 38%. One in three children is overweight or obese in America, and perhaps most tragically evolved, this is the first generation of Americans expected to live shorter and much sicker lives than their parents. With the Aramark contract up for bid, I'm here to urge the board to find a better supplier, but I know it will take more than this since the issue is constrained by several factors, namely corporate capture of our government regulatory agencies and the disappearance of commercial kitchens to prepare fresh whole foods for the children. So while we must find a better supplier, we must also act at the local level. Here are four easy steps we can take. The first is setting a sugar limit for the meals. The USDA allows an unlimited amount of sugar in any school meal, crazy, I know, but you can set a reasonable limit by not offering chocolate milk and juice twice a day. Water and regular milk should be the only drink options. I'm aware that you must offer two drink, two milk choices, so this could be skim and 1%. Different milk fats are allowed under the current guidelines. Replacing the sugary cereals and Pop Tarts with low-sugar cereals, toast, or oatmeal. Making high-protein breakfasts, the, like eggs or yogurt, the default. So Wellness Committee members push to make this option three days a week, but the kidneys, kids need a solid start every day of the week. Solution two is banning any foods containing artificial food dyes. A preponderance of studies have shown they cause hyperactivity and other behavioral issues in children. The next step is to stop selling unhealthy snacks like chips at every meal. Wellness Committee members recently got their sale banned at elementary school breakfast, but they should be eliminated or replaced with healthy options. And finally, let's end all fast food partnerships like Domino's on Fridays and the McDonald's fundraisers. These companies are not engaging in philanthropy. They are marketing to kids, just like they do through the zoo, the children's museum, and library events. Schools should be a safe zone from this relentless junk food marketing. So to close, Mill Creek is a wonderful school district with great teachers, facilities, and academics. Now is the time to bring the food up to par with everything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker we have this evening is Mr. Lou Aliotta. You have three minutes, Mr. Aliotta. Once you hit the code, please state your names and your topic.
Lou Aliotta, address on file, and my topic is legal issues. Well, good evening, board, administration, parents, students, taxpayers. All the depositions for my $3 million lawsuit against 17 school board directors is continuing, and I strongly recommend that every school board director in this room read the depositions from 2018 to the present time. The transfer of the financial responsibility to protect and defend public officials was transferred from not one, but two insurance companies. And you, as school board directors, with the exception of one vote, approve that. The responsibility, and that responsibility was only for the Aliotta case. Who is the intention of the proposal to the board in May of 2024 by a solicitor? Why would this solicitor prepare a resolution for the transfer, but only in the Aliotta case? Is there written documentation by solicitors or a solicitor? That discussion, that discussion of the legality of violations of law was available, but it wasn't presented to the board. Penalty or fines for violation of a citizen's civil rights is $250,000 per person. That's eight school board directors. From the original, it comes to $2 million. Let me give you a little background. Much of the taxpayer money that was already spent is still taxpayer money. And you're trying to defend a court order from a common pleas judge. Do you think that a federal circuit court is going to ignore that? Where's the transparency? Have an enjoyable evening and thank you for the opportunity to, and privilege, to exercise my and your freedom of speech.
Thank you. Next speaker we have tonight is, sorry if I, Shawna Thompson? Sorry if I go wrong here first. Say your name and your topic, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Shawna Thompson, and I'm here today to talk about the honey packet incident that occurred at Tracy Elementary. And I'm aware that this incident is still under investigation and there's things that I, you know, that I won't be able to talk about. My concern as a parent is addressing, going forward, the safety of our students, bringing in substances that look like candy, taste like candy. Today, you know, kids are exposed to a number of things, edibles. How is this going to look going forward? What are we going to do to ensure that this isn't something that's going to occur again, something that could become even more serious? How do we ensure our kids' safety going forward in the schools and during lunches? Who is monitoring the situations? What are we going to do to keep drugs or, you know, suspected drugs out of our, out of our schools from this point forward? And also, why, why weren't parents more informed of what the actual packets contained? I know that they were informed that it was an energy substance, but there was actually more to it than that. And I feel that, I know personally of some other students who came home with the packets and parents were unaware of what, what was going on until the following day. And I think that it was, you know, doing kind of a disservice to not only our students, but the parents too, not giving them that information the day of the incident in case other students came home, maybe take, used these packets and needed to be seen by, you know, an emergency staff. And I just want to know, going forward, what can we do to ensure that something like this isn't going to happen again in the event that this could have turned out to be much more serious? That's really all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other visitors like to speak, same thing? Okay, moving on to item four, old business. Is there any old business? Seeing the old business, moving on to item five, instruction and student services. Mrs. Winchell?
Thank you. There are 16 items this evening. All of them were discussed at the committee meeting that was held on March 10th. I'd like to take them in a couple of blocks. I'd like to take 5.01 through 5.10. First, those are all very similar. They are all renewal or add-on and renewal purchases of software. 5.01 is the accelerated reader purchase. One-year renewal cost is $16,533. This is for middle school students and it's used to motivate, monitor, and manage student independent reading. 5.02, the EdPuzzle purchase. This is a one-year renewal contract. The cost is $18,137 for grades six through 12, teachers and students. It's a digital platform used for all courses that support our students working in the digital environment. It offers a variety of tools and resources for both teachers and students. 5.03 is the ESGI purchase, educational software for guiding instruction. It's a one-year renewal contract. The cost is $14,760. It's for all grades K and 1, teachers and students. This is a progress monitoring tool that's used by both ELA and math. 5.04 is the Forecast 5 purchase. It's a one-year renewal contract with a cost of $28,515.38. This resource is for administrative use to analyze and manipulate various school and district-based data. 5.05 is the Formative Purchase. This is a one-year renewal and add-on contract with a cost of $35,000. It extends our current six-through-eight contract to include grades three through five and nine through 12. It's a platform that helps teachers create and deliver formative assessments and lessons, providing real-time feedback and data to track student progress. 5.06 is an iXL Extension Purchase. This is an add-on to our currently existing contract with a cost of $38,400. These additional licenses are for instruction and independent practice for ELA and math in grades one and two, and some classes in grades 11 and 12. We are currently implementing it this year in grades three through 10 and very pleased with the progress we're seeing with it. 5.07 is the CAMI Purchase. This is a one-year renewal contract. The cost is $19,195. It's for all students in grades K through 12, teachers and students. Digital tool that supports students working in the digital environment, a variety of tools and resources to manipulate and engage in student learning. 5.08 is the MAP Purchase. This is a one-year renewal contract with a cost of $50,075 for all teachers and students in grades one through 12. It's an adaptive assessment that measures growth and achievement in ELA and math. 5.09 is the MEMBEAM Purchase. This is a one-year contract with a cost of $28,760. It's for a middle school student that creates personalized differentiated instruction and vocabulary and word consciousness. And 5.10, the Mystery Science Purchase. This is a one-year contract with a cost of $14,950. It's the primary resource used to support science instruction in grades K through five, interactive lessons and activities with content-specific assessments for the students. I'd like to make a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.10.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion about items 5.1 through 5.10?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against aye, motion passes.
5.11 is the School AI Purchase. We had several questions on that at the committee meeting, if you'll remember, on March 10th. We still don't have answers to some of those and some additional questions have come up. So I'd like to make a motion to table item 5.11.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor, say aye to table.
Aye.
Against aye, that item's table.
Okay, 5.12 is the Spanish Purchase. This is a new six-year contract. It has a cost of $158,209.41, and that includes printed textbooks and online resources for grades nine through 12, Spanish classes. We have levels one through five, and it replaces the current outdated resource. 5.13 is working with young children resource purchase. It's a six-year renewal contract with a cost of $600 for virtual teacher resources used in the nine-through-12 child development courses. 5.14 is the Holly Clark Agreement. This is a professional development speaker contract. It has a cost of $13,900 for nationally recommended speaker on artificial intelligence and engaging instructional practices to perform two in services during the 25-26 school year. She'll hold the keynote address to teachers at the beginning of the year and provide breakout sessions at the October full-day-in-service. 5.15 is the Miller University Student Teaching Affiliation Agreement. Approval is requested for this agreement, which is much like other agreements we have with local colleges and universities for assistant teachers. And finally, 5.16, the AP Seminar Scoring Session. Approval is requested for one high school teacher to attend the AP Seminar Scoring Session from May 31st to June 7th in Salt Lake City, Utah, at no cost to the district. I'd like to make a motion to approve items 5.11 through 5.16, excuse me, 5.12 through 5.16.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, Personnel Policy Committee, Mr. Brink.
Thank you. We have three items this evening. Item 6.01, Policy 308, Employment Contract Board Resolution Final Reading. Like to make a motion that we approve item 6.01.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against aye, motion passes.
Item 6.02, the March 24th, 2025 Personnel Board Report. At Bell Valley, we have a resignation of a janitor. I'd like to remove item number two under Bell Valley Resignations. We also have a resignation of a pre-K assistant and also a student interventionist specialist. We have a leave of absence of a special education teacher autistic support. At Chestnut Hill, we have a recommendation for a health and physical education teacher temporary professional contract. We also have a fourth-grade teacher professional contract. At Grandview, we have a recommendation for a special education teacher emotional support K through second professional contract. We have a special education teacher emotional support three through five temporary professional contract and a special education teacher autistic support temporary professional contract. At Walnut Creek, we have a resignation of a special education assistant emotional support. We have a recommendation for a speech and language pathologist, long-term substitute. At Westlake, we have a recommendation for an eighth-grade science teacher temporary professional contract. JS Wilson, we have a recommendation for a seventh-grade English language arts teacher temporary professional contract. We have a seventh-grade science teacher temporary professional contract. We have an eighth-grade science teacher temporary professional contract. At McDowell Intermediate, we have a recommendation for a special education teacher learning support temporary professional contract and a janitor third shift. We have a leave of absence for a family consumer science teacher. At McDowell, we have a recommendation for a health and physical education teacher temporary professional contract. We have a change of status for a staff nurse part-time at Bell Valley/Grandview to staff nurse full-time at McDowell/MIHS. We have a leave of absence for a school security officer. Mill Creek Education Center, we have a retirement of a registration secretary after 25 years of service. We thank you for those years of service. We have a resignation of a girls' varsity basketball assistant coach and a boys' water polo assistant coach. We have recommendations for six board-approved volunteers, two monitors for first student employment activity, and athletic supplements for '24, '25, '25, '26, and football supplements for '25, '26. We have a leave of absence for a maintenance manager and electrician, also an engagement coordinator. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 6.02 with your removal of the number two resignation. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item six point zero two with your removal of the number-two resignation under Bell Valley.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay?
Item six point zero three, the revised job descriptions. There were three that went through committee. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item six point zero three.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Brink. Moving on to item seven, monthly enclose reports, Mr. O'Toole.
Thank you. Um, seven point oh one and seven point oh two are informational. They're the enrollment summary and investment summary. Are there any questions regarding those items? Hearing none, I would ask to take a block of seven point oh three through seven point oh seven, which, uh, seven point oh three represents the student activity accounts, seven point oh four, budget transfers, seven point oh five, our bond money summary reports, seven point oh six is our treasures, uh, report, and seven point oh seven are the financial reports for each respective fund. I would ask to take that as a block.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve seven point zero three through seven point zero seven?
Motion?
No, a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one question. Mr. Toole, on the, uh, report for, uh, district funds for the federal fund, there's a variance of two million dollars year-to-date at this point for income?
You're looking at the general fund financial report?
I know normally you tell me that's timing, but in light of the recent, is that timing due to the government not making payments? Or why is it probably two million dollars behind year-to-date? Page three.
Of the general fund financial report, correct? Just want to make sure I'm looking at the correct report. Um, well, part of that is, you're looking at the grand total, and part of that is, is we had Federal Reserve money. I mean, there was two point zero five seven related to federal relief funds that we recognized last year at this time, whereas this year's, there's none, so subtract that out. You're pretty much spot on in terms of timing, correct? Because you're saying it's about two million?
Yeah, but our budget's two point eight, and we've only got one million in, and last year had one point three year-to-date. So we're still one point eight light.
I know, but if you're, you're looking at three point, let's just round it up, three point two million for prior year, year-to-date, correct? Out of that three point two, two million, fifty-seven thousand relates to federal relief funds, the RSR funds specifically. So if you subtract out that two million fifty-seven, and there's a variance of two million, ninety-nine thousand, you're off twenty grand from the prior year.
Understand, but you have budgeted two point eight. Budget is two point eight expected in, right?
Uh, yes, if that's the question you're asking. I thought you were comparing to prior year.
Yeah, I'm saying that we're, we're virtually almost one point eight million dollars light, and there are only four months left in the, three months left in the fiscal year.
Which is typical a- at the end of the day, because your title funds and a lot of that isn't going to get, we, we book it as cash value throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, we'll book an accrual adjustment to recognize the total revenue amount, and we get paid in July and August related to the prior year. Um, so that is common.
But I wanted to verify that that was common, considering all that's happening and federal funds being delayed and paused. I want to make sure that we're not expecting a one point eight million dollar short fund, you know, or argument later at the end of the year.
We are not, um, not a one point eight million dollar shortfall as a result of federal funds.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that was a normal.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, and just to confirm, I mean, again, you take out the two million dollars, we're pretty much spot on with the prior year in terms of our cash allocation year-to-date. I do think we're going to be a little bit shorter than the budget number because of access funds specifically, but not related to anything going on within the federal government administration.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay?
Yep.
Motion passes. Moving on to item eight, Finance and Operations Committee. Each of these items were, uh, reviewed in, uh, committee, and, uh, people in more detail, individuals can review that on our Zoom meeting from the March tenth committee meeting, so with that, uh, there are twenty two items, and we'll split this up probably in two blocks. We'll start with the first one, eight point zero one, door replacement, district-wide, seventy-nine thousand dollars. Roof ladder replacement, eight point zero two, district-wide bid, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars. Eight point zero three, carpet flooring replacement, district-wide bid, three hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars. Eight point zero four, install of boiler mag and HVAC systems, district-wide bid, eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Eight point zero five, fencing project, district-wide bid, thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Eight point zero six, exterior restoration, district-wide bid, one million, fourteen thousand dollars, which was less than the one million, eighty-five thousand that was expected. Eight point zero seven, ADA restrooms, district-wide electrical bid, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. ADA restrooms, district-wide general bid, forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Point zero nine, ADA restrooms, district-wide plumbing bid, three hundred fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Eight point one zero, AW Farrel roofing agreement, roof restoration for the bus repair garage, fifty-five thousand, seventy-five dollars. Eight point one one, AW Farrel roofing agreement, roof restoration for food warehouse, thirty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars. Eight point one two, AW Farrel roofing agreement, skylight replacement, McDowell Intermediate High School, seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars. Eight point one three, Wilkins Company Inc. Agreement, School District, uh, Mill Creek Township School District Annual Fire Alarm Inspection, thirteen thousand, six eighty. Eight point one four, Wilkins Company Agreement, Mill Creek Township School District Annual Fire and Burglar Alarm Monitoring, fifteen thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars. Like to make a motion to accept eight point zero one through eight point one four. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. Next, we'll take eight point one five is the Apple iPad quote. Eight point one six, the Accounts Available Report. Eight point one seven, the Northwest Tri County Intermediate Unit Budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, that can be viewed on the IU Five website. Eight point one eight, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three School-Based Access Program Billing Agreement. Eight point one nine is the Mill Creek Township School District Fees for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Eight point two zero, Mill Creek Township School District Student Activity Count Officers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Eight point two one, donation to the PAR team, and eight point two two, anonymous donation for the pre-K child development tuition. Have a motion to, can I have a motion to accept eight point one five through eight point two two?
Motion?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of eight point one five through eight point two two? Say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. Moving on to item nine, Superintendent, Dr. Kavanaugh.
There are two items under my report that were discussed at committee meeting earlier in the month, the one being the ADA restroom bid, and the second one, nine point zero two, the new building electronic messaging center. I'd like Mr. Gallagher to speak on the bidding process from there.
Yes, so the, uh, HVAC bid, we did, uh, we did get a bid, uh, which we needed. A little bit higher than we thought, uh, the estimate was going to be around fifty thousand dollars. Um, but overall, um, I think, uh, that's a good bid that we got. And then the second one is for the electric, uh, electronic messenger center. Uh, we did get two bids, which is great. Uh, the estimated cost was a hundred thousand per building, uh, and we got a cost of one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, so I think that's a good bid as well.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the ADA Restrooms District-Wide HVAC Bid, nine point zero one and nine point two, which is the electronic message center?
Motion?
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, no, excuse me, quick question on the electronic signs. That hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar bid, that's the sign and installation, or is that just installation?
Uh, both, sign and installation, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yep.
Good. Any other questions?
Are there other buildings that we want to target with a digital sign?
We're planning on doing all of them. Yep.
If I'm not mistaken, those two buildings have been waiting a very, very, very long time for signage.
JS Wilson was there, opened in two thousand and eight and has never had a sign since it opened. Every other building at least has a sign. JS has had nothing since two thousand and eight.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes.
That's it.
Okay, moving on to item ten, new business, any new business? Hearing none, moving on to item eleven, Solicitors Report.
No action items tonight, thank you.
Okay, moving on, remarks. Twelve point zero one, Parks and Rec, Ms. Nussham, Ms. Pasqual.
There hasn't been a meeting since our last report.
Okay, thank you. Twelve point zero two, PSBA Wade Brink.
Nothing to report.
Okay, I'd just like to follow up on that. Just, uh, thank you for everyone. We have a hundred percent participation in the board assessment. So, uh, the cutoff was Friday, Friday or Saturday, and, uh, we see they'll start processing that, and I think the update to the board will be next month at some point, right?
Yes, late April.
Late April, right, so thank you for taking the time, uh, to, uh, complete that, ten for ten, appreciate that, including Dr. Kavanaugh. School Board Remarks, any school board remarks? Yes.
I'd like to make a quick comment. I had the pleasure of joining the Math Club at McDowell for their celebration of Pi Day, and I know that Pi Day is three point one four, but we celebrate it on the thirteenth because of scheduling. Um, it was a wonderful, wonderful, um, experience. The kids had games, activities, um, competitions, and of course, pie eating. Uh, it was wonderful, so I'd like to give a shout out to Maggie Testa and her team for doing a great job. In case you didn't know this, the Math Club is the largest club in the high school, so I just thought I would point that out, but thank you.
I'll just say, uh, if you haven't had an opportunity in today's newspaper, seeing this is budget time, and you know, we're always talking about budget and costs and things like that, so this morning's paper, Valerie Myers did a great job, uh, reporting on a twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five report, uh, released by the Pennsylvania School Board Association, um, based on some surveys from the, uh, five hundred and one districts. Where it highlights the impact of some of the costless requirements based on schools for, for schools, charter school tuition, special education, employee pensions. It goes on to say that, let's get this here, sorry. Uh, there we go, thank you. Okay, sorry. Um, in the last decade, cost for those three things, charter pensions, renovations, those three things alone increased six point one billion dollars. The state funding intended to help pay those costs increased by less than two point one billion, leaving a, quote, mandated cost gap, mandated cost gap of slightly more than four billion dollars in the last decade. When state and federal revenues fail to keep pace with the increasing cost of those mandates, school districts are left to make up the differences locally, either by raising local taxes, making cuts to school district programs and services, or postponing renovations or other projects. So it's a great article by Valerie, and so I encourage you, I want to take a look at it, but it's pretty appropriate during this budget time process and the, uh, unfunded mandates that, uh, we all have to live with all the time. Any other school board remarks?
Yes, I would like to just say thank you to Mrs. Austin for visiting us again to speak about the importance of healthy food that's offered to our kids and just keep fighting the good fight. Change takes time.
I'd like to mention the robotics team that competed in Pittsburgh over the weekend, uh, team number sixty-three. They were ranked fourteenth. Uh, there are hundreds of teams there. And what a magnificent program, excellent support and a great opportunity for these aspiring young, hopefully next-generation engineers to get really good hands-on training, so thank you.
Any other school board? Hey, Dr. Kavanaugh.
Yeah, I have a few different people I'd like to recognize this evening. First would be our district data team members who are currently at the PDE Data Summit, so I'm excited to hear all the new things they're learning, what they'll bring back to us when they return, and we'll make sure they come to the board and share that. Second, I would like to thank our HR team and our administrators, because we have already hired eighteen positions for next school year, and we're still in March, so they're doing a great job getting some great candidates. So, uh, kudos to the HR team and our administrators. A special shout out to Kevin Coleman. I've mentioned Kevin before. Kevin is one of our former students who wrote a book. It's called A Mascot Tale, The Untold Story of Seawolf. And Kevin took his show on the road. He went and did a book signing for some of our students at Westlake previously, and then this past Friday, I got to join him in his most recent one up at McDowell, when he was up at McDowell, talking to a few of our classes up there, and just the excitement to see Kevin doing that was wonderful. My next one is a shout out to Blaze Myers. I was informed recently that Blaze Myers, who's one of our student athletes, committed to Baldwin Wallace. Now, the uniqueness of this is he committed to play football and also basketball at the collegiate level. So two main sports, playing both at the college level, and if anybody could do it, Blaze certainly can, so congratulations to Blaze. And my last one is one I've mentioned previously to the board that I wanted to share publicly, deals with McDowell High School and McDowell Mob. So the McDowell Mob is our student group that's led by Crystal Myers, Maggie Testa, and Amy Palermo, and then Mr. Becker and Mrs. Means help oversee it. In some of our travels to games recently, we brought large groups on our way trip, and at Pitt Johnstown a few weeks ago, um, we got a message back to Sandy from one of the people at the game, who was the game manager, and this is what he stated. He said, "When I got home, my wife always starts off with, 'How did it go?'" "The first thing I said was, 'McDowell brought over a hundred kids, and they were great.' "The principal, the athletic director, and other school officials were right there with them." "When the PIAA, uh, communicates that we are overseeing education-based athletic program, McDowell High School was a shining example of such. "But I thought that was very important to say, one, kudos to our students, because "our students at all the away games they went to, whether it be at Slipper Rock, down at UPJ, "or anywhere else they went, very well behaved and very great representation of our school district." "So thank you to the students and to the adults that I mentioned here this evening, and that'll be it for me."
Great. With that, we'll move on to item thirteen, adjournment. The next regularly scheduled meetings of the Mill Creek Township School Board of Directors will be held April the seventh. That's a week earlier than normal. Uh, committee meetings begin at six PM. There are three committees. Uh, meetings held one right after the other. Instruction and Student Services Committee, Personnel and Policy Committee, Finance and Operations Committee. It may be the whole, as needed. Maybe the whole meeting will typically begin immediately following the last committee meeting for the evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Roger.